Good luck.
I make no promises.
He's not stupid. He went to Walnut Hills.
Yeah.
Um, Ben, do you know how to turn these things on?
I don't, no.
It's this, the face thing. Turn the face thing on.
Okay.
Turn it, yeah. Yeah, there'll be time probably in between. This won't take long.
Are we ready? Good evening. In accordance with, um, per board bylaw, um, for organizational meetings and, um, according to Ohio Revised Code, and as outgoing president, I will begin the meeting as President pro temp for this particular meeting and until the election of a president takes place during the organizational meeting. Okay. We don't need, we don't need a motion. It's in the bylaws. Yep. I call to order the January 6, 2020, 5:30 PM Special Public Tax Budget Hearing Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence, to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morowski?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. I'll now invite Mrs. Wagner to come to the podium to present the tax budget.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present the annual tax budget, um, to the board. We will be voting on it in the next meeting. Um, so, oops. The purpose of the tax, every school district in the state of Ohio has to do this, um, and it's required by our Ohio Revised Code. The purpose is so that the state auditor can set the millage rates for our, um, operating fund levies, general fund, and to ensure that we're collecting enough revenues to make our debt payments. Um, so here's the specifics. On the general fund, the data that's, and you have the report in your, in front of you, in paper. Um, the general fund estimates come right out of your forecast, and so what they do is just restate it on a calendar year basis because taxes are levied on a calendar year basis. And then the bond funds revenue, which is where we make all our debt payments from, is based on local tax revenue, the bond levy, and state reimbursements, um, the local credits for homestead and rollback. So the big question to answer is, are our revenues, estimated revenues, going to cover our debt obligations? And those are shown to you on page seven and eight, just our voted debt. We have one, um, obligation that's voted debt, and that was the $480 million bond levy that we passed a while ago to support the rebuilding of our district and the facility master plan. So, as you can see, for calendar year 2020, we're estimating revenues of $33.9 million, which will cover the $30 million of principal and interest. And then the same for '21. So we're in good shape for our voted debt. On the unvoted debt, which is not required by this form, but because we're committed to fiscal transparency, we always report our unvoted debt. Those are the Q Scoobies and, um, the COPS issues that we have done to help facilitate the other parts of our growth plan. Um, and unfortunately, because we lost the $5 million pilot payment in, from the city, um, our revenues aren't going to cover the interest, principal and interest payments for the calendar years 2020 and '21. So the general fund, if you remember, we're going to have to take it out of the general fund operating to do our debt transfer to cover those payments. So, it's, um, so the X represents that the revenues aren't there, but will generate the more revenues from the general fund. And that's the tax budget. It's very simple. You have, um, the very last page on here. Uh, she just shows you the principal and debt, um, balances and payments, um, for you. Um, went, once approved by a resolution tonight, then I will file it with the Hamilton County, uh, Budget Commission tomorrow. So can I answer any questions for you?
Okay. Do board members have questions or comments about the budget? Mr. Morowski?
Um, thanks so much, Treasurer Wagner. I was just wondering if you could repeat for the edification of those at home and the public and others who are here about our unvoted debt and why we, uh, why we're going to be at a loss because we're not receiving pilots, is that right, from the city?
Yes. So our unvoted debt are the COPS issues and the Q Scoobies, which, um, the part of what funded, um, those principal and interest payments while we incurred those debt was the city and the county monies that come in.
Right.
Five million dollars. Um, the county monies are still there, the estimated revenues, but we had to take the city out because they pulled it out of their budget.
And-
So the five million dollars that we were not going to get every year was causing that difference.
And that 33% number we've been adamant about would help us cover that, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
So before I walk away from the podium, I just wanted to give a shout out to Kevin Ashley. He's our Director of Financial Transparency. He's the one who did all this work, but, um, he's so new, he's not comfortable presenting publicly yet, but, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Um, we are at the item on the agenda for hearing of the public regarding the tax budget, but we did not get any requests tonight. So, in the interest of time and having no other business before us, I declare this meeting adjourned, and we will move shortly into our organizational meeting. Okay. In, in like a couple minutes. Let me get myself organized.
Ben, can you have to take a call?
Yes, if you need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. Maybe for the, I don't know, regular meeting, presentation or something. Your family's here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
They shut up.
Ready? Good evening. Per board bylaw 0151 for organizational meeting and the Ohio Revised Code 3313.14 for the annual organizational meeting, and as outgoing president, I will begin the meeting as President pro temp until election of a president takes place farther down on the agenda. I call to order the January 6, 2020 organizational meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Per board bylaw 0152 for officers and Ohio Revised Code 3313.10, oath of office of member, we will now prepare for the oath of office. Ms. Wagner, elected board members and family members, please prepare for the oath of office. And we will start with the oath of office being provided by our Treasurer, Jim Wagner. Uh, first, Pamela Bowers, newly elected, was appointed March 27, 2019, to fill the seat of Erica Copeland Dansby, who vacated that seat, and she was re, she was elected for the first time in November. Her family could come down. Can we, can we come over just a little bit? Over, over just a little bit. Of course. Come gather around her. I thought your pastor was here. He can, he can come down if he comes down. Oh, is that him? Right there, okay. All right.
So, raise your right hand, thank you. Um, and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear-
Aye, Pamela Bowers, do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio-
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio-
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially-
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially-
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education-
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education-
Of the Cincinnati City School District-
Of the Cincinnati City School District-
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio-
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio-
During my continuance in office-
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Okay, get ready for a picture. Yes, hold the baby. Thank you. Okay. Congratulations to Ms. Bowers. Our next person to receive the oath of office, he's not new to us, but he's newly elected to this board, uh, having won his seat in November of, uh, 2019, Mr. Ben Lindy. And we welcome Ben, and we welcome his family down. Looks like we have a shy one, huh? Okay.
Test. I'm going to step closer so you can hear my microphone. Okay, so please, um, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear-
I, Ben Lindy, do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution, I, yes, I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio-
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially-
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially-
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education-
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education-
Of the Cincinnati City School District-
Of the Cincinnati City School District-
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office-
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Congratulations, Mr. Lindy. Okay. Now, our next person to receive the oath of office is a returning board member who was re-elected. This is actually, she's going into her fourth term, Ms. Eve Bolton.
I come with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I'm ready.
Okay. Yes, our family, CPS family, there you go. All right, so, uh, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear-
I, Eve Bolton, do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio-
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially-
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially-
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education-
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education-
Of the Cincinnati City School District-
Of the Cincinnati City School District-
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office-
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Bolton. Okay, and then, finally, I get to introduce myself. I am, I am a returning board member, having been re-elected in November, going into my second term with the, uh, city of Cincinnati, uh, School District. And, uh, I would like for my entire crew to come on down.
It is a time question.
She doesn't want to come. Hello, how are you? Hi, good.
So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear-
I, Carolyn Jones, do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio-
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially-
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially-
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education-
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education-
Of the Cincinnati City School District-
Of the Cincinnati City School District-
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office-
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my-
Of the City of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
This is true, I wanna hear, it's a hundred percent true.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing. Sure, okay, so, the, the, we're going to, we're gonna, in a, in a second, we're gonna take our roll call, and I'll present the board to you, and then we'll have our election of officers. But Ms. Board Member Bowers has made a request to redo her photo, Ms. Worley, because there were people who were missing, who had to take a quick break. So, if we could get her family back down.
So, the next thing you have to do.
Thank you for that.
Joe was talking to Delmore, he has a.
Okay. Alrighty. Congratulations to all the members. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here, thank you. So, it gives me great pleasure, and it's, and it's an honor to be able to introduce to you our community of parents, key stakeholders, administration, and our staff, your 2020 Cincinnati City School District Board of Education. I'll introduce each one. I'm gonna start on this end, for a change, right? Board Member Michael Morosky. Board Member Pamela Bowers. Board Member and outgoing Vice President Ryan Messer. Board Member Melanie Bates, almost messed the B up. Board Member Ben Lindy. And Board Member Eve Bolton. And your outgoing President Carolyn Jones, your 2020 board. Thank you. So, we're gonna move on now to the election, to tonight's organizational meeting. The purpose of it is to really, we're required by statute to develop our organizational structure, which will be our election of officers, and our, our appointments to our committees, and appointments to our external partner groups. So, we will move on to the election of a board president for the year 2020. I need a motion to elect a board president for the year 2020. Nominations are now in order for the office of president, and any member may nominate. No seconds are necessary.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Carolyn Jones for president.
Carol- Carolyn Jones is nominated. Are there any further nominations? Okay. All right, if there are no further nominations, nominations are now closed. Carolyn Jones has been nominated for president. As many as are in favor of Carolyn Jones being nominated, is this a roll call, treasurer? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. And I'm sitting in the chair, so I don't have to change. And I meant to say to the audience, you're certainly welcome to stay through this. It, it, it's supposed to end at, in thirty minutes, but sometimes we go over. But you are more, if you need to leave, please feel free to do so, but we certainly welcome you to stay through the whole meeting. Thank you. Okay. So, just, just a couple of comments. It says on the agenda, the president's message. I'm not gonna do a long message. I just wanna say that I am certainly honored to be nominated to serve in this capacity again. It's been, well, since I've been on the board for four years, but especially over the past couple of years. I think this board has accomplished a lot in working with our superintendent and her team. We still have a long way to go. We still have some outstanding concerns and things that we need to do to continue to develop a culture of excellence. I am most proud of the fact that as a board, we really work hard to be a united, collective body of individuals who align themselves in many ways. We respect each other in terms of our differences of opinion and whatnot, but ultimately, the bottom line, to have a strong board unit that is decisive and works on behalf of you, our constituents, is to have a solid board. So, I am very pleased with that. I congratulate our new members who are coming on board, and they're, they're, they are jumping in with both feet. I can tell you that, because you have to. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Take an oath. I know, I have to take an oath, right, I'm sorry. You could've yelled that out. I do have to take an oath. That is required, thank you. Yes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Carolyn Jones, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the President of the Board of Education.
Discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education.
Of the Cincinnati City School District.
Of the Cincinnati City School District.
Of the City of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Of the City of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Thank you, thank you. And ditto on the president's message, which I was supposed to do after the oath, but anyway. Okay, thank you. We will now elect a vice president for the, for year 2020. I need, I need a motion to elect a board vice president. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice president. Anyone may nominate, no seconds are necessary. Ms. Bowers?
I nominate Ryan Messer for the position of vice president, for the office of vice president.
Okay, Ryan Messer is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, nominations are closed. It, Ryan Messer has been nominated for the seat of vice president. We now need a roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. The vice president, Mr. Ryan Messer, is elected. Congratulations. And he will now take the oath of office.
Repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Ryan Messer, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education.
Discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education.
Of the Cincinnati City School District.
Of the Cincinnati City School District.
Of the City of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Of the City of Cincinnati, Ohio, during my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Messer? Your vice president message?
Well, I didn't prepare much, but I have to say that it is an honor to be able to serve with this group of individuals. I think collectively, we represent just an incredibly strong board of fresh eyes and very seasoned, experienced veterans that are all one hundred percent focused on making sure that we provide the best possible education to the children of the Cincinnati School District. And, and it is a real privilege to be here. I think it's been firmly established multiple times since I joined this board that this, this isn't kids' play. We're involved in major decisions that affect our city, because those decisions ultimately affect our children and the families they come from. And it's a real privilege to be here, and I thank each of you for your vote of confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Okay, so, moving on, it is now time for us to seek motion on approval of our organizational structure. We, I need a motion to approve the, this year's Board of Education organization structure and appointments. I need that motion on the floor.
So moved, second?
Second, thank you. So, as we enter into our discussion about our committee structures, I just wanna remind folks that we usually start off in, in open conversation and discussion about each committee, and those individuals who want to serve on those committees can, can speak so, speak to that. It starts out as a negotiated process. And so, because we do wanna try to make this as timely and brief as possible, I think that, just keep in mind that it, it is a negotiated process. Hopefully, we can get our committees to three people each. We have the Finance Committee, Policy Committee, Student Achievement Committee, a new committee, Health and Safety Committee, and then we have a time-limited committee called ADHOC, which is now part of our organizational structure, but has, was appointed in November four of last year. So, and so now we have one, two, three, four, five committees. We did pass, we did approve, at one of our last board meetings, that given that we expanded the number of committees that the board president would have to serve on at least one committee. So, I just wanted to put that out there for people. So, we are now open for discussion, and I think we'll just go down the line, if that's okay. So, for Finance Committee, we have one, two, three, four, five, six people interested. We have Ms. Bates, Ms. Bolton, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lindy, Mr. Messer, Mr. Morosky. I will, first of all, remove my name from that list. Okay? Ms. Bolton?
Madam, I would like to remain on that list.
Okay. Mr. Morosky?
Being that, that's the only committee of the three, at least the three that were here when I got here, now there's two more. But it's one committee I haven't served on, and I would like to leave my name on it too, learn more about what goes on in that committee.
Okay. Any other expressed interest for Finance?
I'd like to leave my name on the list.
Mr. Lindy? Mr. Messer?
And I have served on that committee for two, the past two years, so I'll be glad to allow someone else the opportunity.
Okay. Mr. Messer is removed. Ms. Bates, your preference?
My preference is to remain on the committee. I'm one of the long-term members, and I've been especially involved in the organization of the new Turk, and I would like to consider, continue that involvement. And it says that there's an automatic dual appointment to audit committee. With the Turk being formed, this is now a three-committee obligation. So, I just wanted to point that out to people as well.
Okay. So, we, we now, this is open for discussion. We've heard the four people, we need to get down to three. What, what we can do, if it's helpful, is move through all the committees, then see where we stand, and we maybe have some ability to negotiate, if that's okay. All right, so we have four for that committee. Policy Committee, we have three individuals, Ms. Bates, Ms. Bolton, and Ms. Bowers.
Sounds like a law firm.
They're all Bs, right? The Bee, the Bee ladies, huh?
I'm willing to remove my name from Policy, if I need to, if somebody else is interested in Policy.
Okay, is there anybody else who wants to add their name to Policy? We need three members of Policy. You sure you wanna remove?
No, I, I, if somebody else was interested.
Okay.
And likewise, I would step aside if somebody else was interested.
Okay, I'm not hearing that anybody else was asking to serve on that committee. Where you at, Ozzy? Okay, did I hear a comment, I'm sorry.
I was just saying that I'm always interested in Policy, so if it goes down the line, and they're, just to throw it out there, I would say, I am interested in it, and I'm not, I don't wanna put my name on it now, but as we go on, and we're figuring out where everyone goes.
Okay, so Morosky is a possibility.
Yeah, I'd be open to do that again.
Okay. So, we, we have three, possibly four, members. Okay, Student Achievement, I think this is gonna be a big one. Okay. We have Ms. Bolton, Ms. Bowers, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lindy, Mr. Messer, Mr. Morosky. I will remove my name from Student Achievement, as much as I hate to do it, but I do. I will remove my name.
Could I?
Yes.
As we, 'cause are, are we really looking at the distribution, since the ADHOC is going away? Are we looking at the distribution between the four?
Yes.
Which would be twelve, which would mean you wouldn't have to necessarily serve, and you could still be ex officio, and that would still give the other six.
It could open up, yes.
It would still give two, everybody two committees.
I, I would be more than happy to do that.
'Cause you're technically, by, by lost a member of each committee already, right?
Okay.
I just, it's a thought.
I think, I think you're right, Mr. Messer, in that the ADHOC committee has already been established. So, these people, because it's only temporary, we don't need to negotiate that. So, we have four committees, if everybody participates on two, then the president does not have to serve, I can still serve in ex officio. So, I can remove my name across the board. Which really leaves, for Student Achievement, one, two, three, four, five, on Health and Safety, we have three. That's Bates, Bolton, and Bowers.
Which one, what'd you say?
Health and Safety Committee, Bates, Bolton, and Bowers.
Is that law firm?
A law firm, right.
So, that would be four for both. So that would be four for Bolton.
We need, who, is there anybody who's not on two?
I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not, because my name on Policy is a placeholder.
Well, Mr. Morosky, you, um, you're on Finance, and then you have your name on Student Achievement.
Well, I'm two, that's two, yeah, sorry, so sorry, yeah, well, we've already, yeah.
Okay.
If I could be nosy a little bit, and just for the, yeah, value of discussion. I, I'm more than willing to remove my name from Student Achievement, uh, but I also would like to encourage that at least Mr. Morosky remain on Student Achievement for, um, the continuity of what we've been doing.
The work.
We lost Mr., uh, Davis, and then if I'm stepping down, then Mr. Morosky could remain, I think that would be useful. And since I'm going to be nosy again, since we also lost Mr. Davis from Policy, people with a great legal background could be really good on Policy.
That would be nice.
That would be nice.
If we only had somebody.
That was a genuine cough.
I'm sorry.
I said that was a genuine cough.
Well, that would allow Melanie to do Finance and Health and Safety, but that would be two.
Yes, so Ms. Bates is nominated on two. Ms. Bolton, you just withdrew from Student Achievement?
Yes.
Yeah.
But you are now on three. Bolton on Finance, Policy, and Health and Safety.
Not if I take my name out of Finance and go back to Policy. And then Ms. Bolton, if Ms. Bolton went away from Policy, then it'd be two across the board.
I, I'm not, I'm not hearing what you're saying.
I was just saying, if I took my name off of Finance and left it in Policy, then Ms. Bolton would be on two, Finance and Health and Safety.
Yeah, I, I only want to be on two, I'm just, but I do, I really do want some consistency on Student Achievement, and... Yeah, I'm happy to remain on Finance, withdraw from Student Achievement, and, and then we'll take care of the other one based upon what's needed. Based upon who volunteers for what.
Did you remove from Finance?
No.
Okay.
Not this year.
You removed from Student Achievement?
Yes.
So we, we have, um, we have four people, one, two, three, four, on Student Achievement? Mr. Morosky, are you?
Yeah, I would love to stay there, I mean, like Ms. Bolton said, the past two years, as everybody knows, we have done a lot, uh, which is where these last two committees came from. And I think, um, with the two years of being on Student Achievement, I'm proud of the work we've done, I'd like to help continue. And I also would like to be able to help as we transition, because clearly we're going to have two new members, if I stay on it. We would have two new members, and I think I could be helpful in that transition regarding what comes out of Student Achievement, what stays in Student Achievement, how can we keep the work plan moving? So, and I'm, as I said in our last meeting, I'm all about that, we need to figure that out, so I, I'd really like to stay in the committee.
Ms. Bowers?
Mr. Lindy? If you're willing to swap out Policy for Student Achievement, I'm willing to do that, if you're interested, with your law background.
And we'll let you join Bolton, Bowers, and...
Yeah, there's a theme. No, I think, um, I'll share my interest in Student Achievement and Finance, and I'll also share that I'm new, and I'd like to go where I can make a difference. For the record, I've never practiced law a day in my life, so just to manage expectations. So, um, I think my, 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 my interest in Student Achievement comes from having been a teacher, uh, and having spent the last 15 years training and supporting teachers, um, including here in Cincinnati Public. And I think that's, um, uh, where my real, uh, heart is, and also where I hope I could add some perspective as somebody who was, um, was a teacher and did it in a low-income public school. But again, that's all in the spirit of, I genuinely would like to go where I can make a difference and be helpful. And on the, on the Finance side, um, I just, uh, I love numbers, I love budgets, I've, I've just run an organization thinking both about the revenue side and the cost side, um, but I'm, I'm here because I love all of this, uh, and I'd like to go where I can make, uh, the biggest difference.
Okay, so let me summarize where we are. Okay, we have four members currently on Finance, we have... No, we have four. Bates, Bolton, Lindy, and Morosky. For Finance. For Policy, we have Bates, Bolton, Bowers, and Morosky. For Student Achievement, we have Bowers, Lindy, Messer, Morosky. Which means Morosky is now on three. And then on Health and Safety, we have Bates, Bolton, Bowers. Okay.
Well, but I'm still on one, so...
You are still on one, right?
Maybe I shouldn't have taken my name off the other one, but, um...
So, I, I can tell you what happens if we're at a stalemate, you all won't want to hear this.
We won't be.
But, but, huh?
Yeah, we won't be, we'll figure it out.
Well...
If I, if I were to be willing to take my name off of Finance, leave Mr. Lindy there, be on Policy, which Ms. Bates said she would be willing to step down from, it still would leave four on Student Achievement.
Right.
So it doesn't matter.
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the, the edification of the audience, this is how it happens when you actually do the people's work in public, instead of behind closed doors and phone calls and whatever, so, sorry if it looks, but it's, it's that sausage making, but we have to do it in front of you.
Yes. So, I, I just, there may be some committees, are we, are we comfortable, is everybody comfortable with the Health and Safety Committee? It says we need three, we have Bates, Bolton, and Bowers, are we comfortable with that?
With the three names?
With the three names.
Well, only in that, that gives multiple.
I know, you don't have a second committee. Do we have a, seems like we're short, yes, Ms. Bolton?
I'd be willing to, to stay on Finance and indeed do the Health and Safety Committee.
I have you down for both.
Okay, and then you can remove my name from the other two?
Remove your name from Policy?
Policy and, uh, Student Achievement.
And Student Achievement. Okay. Then on, so what we have on Policy now is Bates, Bowers, and Morosky.
I remove myself from Policy.
You said only if you needed to.
Okay.
I wrote them what you said, okay. Ms. Bowers, I have you on three committees, and four if you add ADHOC.
One, two, three.
What this boils down to, guys, is, our bylaws say, I believe that the by, I'm correct, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that then the President has to appoint. I would prefer not to do that. Okay. We can think through it. Mr. Lindy?
I'll just say, um, I trust you, Carolyn, and, and I'm not saying that to be evasive, like, you, you've been President for the last year, you were just unanimously elected President again, and, you know, I, I, um, I shared where I hope I can make a difference, but I'm, I trust you to...
Thank you. And, and let me tell you what I think our goal is, and I think we shared this. Number one, we have to achieve a balance in the workload. We have to try to address where people's particular interests and strengths are, in terms of what they want. We also, I think one of the things, and I'll just speak for myself, trying to get balance, um, in the sense of making sure that everybody has an opportunity to serve on a committee that they have not served before. Had I not been in the presidency, I would have been dogged about being on Student Achievement, because I've never served on Student Achievement. But I think it's, it's achieving that balance, and it is about give and take. And, and I have to say, Ms. Bolton, I'm going to put you out there, but I really, really am very proud of you for making the change from Student Achievement, having served there so long, because I know what your passion is about that, and you opted to come off of that. However, it, it still leaves us with four people, so people are going to have to make some hard choices about this. And, um, I think with, uh, Student Achievement, we have one, two, three, four, that's the only committee that Ryan it has expressed an interest in.
Well, I took, I did have Finance, but I took that off.
I know.
And did you take your name off?
I did, I ended up taking it off.
And I think we can leave Mike on there for, for continuity's sake. We did, okay. Well, no, Bolton just withdrew from Policy.
Oh, did you, okay, so I'm back, I'm back on.
Okay.
I guess.
What is the board's pleasure? Mr. Messer, what, you, just to identify what other committee you are, you have an interest in?
Well, I mean, just because of my, uh, outside-of-the-board experience, I mean, that's why I had Finance down originally, but, um, but since I gave that up for Mike, and then he took his name off, maybe I should have not done that.
You want to leave it on Finance?
So I think just leave it on Finance. Unless, unless... The, the Health and Safety and the Student Achievement, I feel like they're all in kind of the same realm, so if that's divided up, kind of, it's generally kind of crafted out of, um, kind of the same thing, so of the two there, I would prefer Student Achievement.
Okay. Mr. Messer, Finance and Student Achievement. Mr. Morosky, Finance, Policy, and Student Achievement.
It is Policy and Student Achievement.
Did you take your name off?
I took my name off Policy to try to...
Okay. Ms. Bowers? Policy, Student Achievement, and Health and Safety. So you need to consider which, okay?
I considered Policy, but I didn't have a taker. I considered removing my name from Policy, but I didn't have a taker. So... With that being said...
Let me, let me just mention the other folks, so we know where we stand. Ms. Bates, I have you on Finance, you said Policy if needed, and I have you on Health and Safety. So that's three. But if you come off of Policy, that only leaves one person. So, we're going to have to make some decisions between Finance and Student Achievement, to be honest. Mr. Lindy, we have you on Student Achievement and Finance.
Who's on Policy now?
Nobody wants Policy.
I love, I love Policy, I don't, I was just trying to do something new, but then I, I'll go back to Paul, I love, I mean...
Would you be willing?
I get paid to do Policy.
Would you be willing to?
Not here.
Would you be willing to drop Finance for Policy?
He was already on Policy.
I already did that, I did that like, three years ago. I did, I did like 10 minutes ago, yeah, I'm good, take me off Finance, I'm on Policy and SAC.
Policy and SAC.
It's old school, like my first year.
Exactly. The greatest place to learn.
I, I think one of the, yes.
I have a suggestion, because, and, just removing personalities, but quite honestly, the two most influential committees are Finance and Student Achievement. So if we can go three and three on that, you know, we have the new, uh, Health and Safety and the Policy, that might even things out, and, um... Since I was the one who, like, brought up, and really lobbied for Health and Safety, I feel as if I should be a part of that, um...
Well, it sounds like we have three there.
Well, we actually have, and, but that's, that's one of the new, you know, that's going to take some time to get up and running. It's not, at, at the first get-go, going to have that, you know, a strong influence until it's up and running, is what I'm saying.
One, two, three.
But Finance definitely does, Student Achievement definitely does.
Well, what it seems to me is that it, with the four committees, I mean, just about everybody has identified two committees at this point. And given that, there are two committees that have four people on them. So does that mean that we only, that we need, um, somebody who is only going to serve on one committee? There's something about the imbalance in that.
Yeah, so we have...
So we're always going to have four people on one.
Yeah, we have Bowers on three.
Bowers?
This one, this one, this one, so I think that'll offload one.
Bowers?
Whichever one. Yeah.
Okay. But Bowers, what I'm, I think the question is, you're on three committees.
Right.
Can you come off one? And which one?
Policy. I could come off one.
All right, Melanie, two of me.
Okay.
Like the good old days.
Why don't, why don't, okay, so Bates and Morosky on that, um, Bowers, one, two, three, four, on Student Achievement, one, two, three, four, on Finance. We need a Policy.
Melanie wants to be here, does Melanie want this one?
Right. If you want to be on Health and Safety...
Well, my first choice is Finance.
Well, I think you need to remain on Finance.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have work that has started, that, uh, you know, with the term...
Well, do you want to come off Health and Safety?
I can, sure, if somebody else...
And go to Policy?
That leaves me...
If that's what the board wants me to do, I'll do that.
God bless you.
I hope it does, but that's another story.
Okay. So, go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
That, that's, then that makes Health and Safety not be four.
Well, we gotta, then, um, uh, somebody has to move over.
From Student Achievement.
That's right.
That's the crux of it right now.
And, and Finance.
Who's the, it's Bates, Bolton, Lindy, who's the fourth, uh, Messer?
Bates, Bolton, Lindy, and Messer for Finance, Bowers, Lindy, Messer, and Morosky for Student Achievement. Bates, we only have two now on Policy, Bates, Morosky, somebody needs to go to Policy. And then, Health and Safety, we have two. So one person from Student Achievement, and one person from Finance need to go to one of these other ones. So, are we at a stalemate?
If I, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Morosky?
For the edification of our newest board member, it sounds like, the, the Health and Safety Committee was born out of Student Achievement Committee, so it's, it's Health and Safety for this, it's student-based, it's not like, Health and Safety, get your blood pressure checked. So I just, just in case you did, I know you were at that meeting, but it was also five and a half hours long, so... What?
I'm, I'm at, Health and Safety came out of Student Achievement.
Well, I'm saying part of, part, when, when we look this year at what's at Student Achievement, I'm just trying to let Mr. Lindy know that the work is still, will be student-based, while Student Achievement is holistic, and there will be Health and Wellness as a piece of, that's the focus. Pedestrian Safety, for example, um, et cetera, et cetera, I just, I don't know if that was clear.
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Madam Chair, and I don't think that the board has fully decided what the Health and Safety Committee is going to be. Especially if we're trying to build these committees in part around, as was suggested by ADHOC, that, uh, we, we build it around our strategic plan. I think the Health and Safety, especially if, and I think Student Achievement will want to keep as much of the whole child concept in Student Achievement, I can see where, and I think we've mentioned this in public session before, that Health and Safety also is really Operations as much, because that's...
We didn't agree to that.
We, no, no.
Okay.
And, and we didn't agree that it was only this, either.
Yep. We haven't decide, we haven't, that's right, okay.
So I didn't, I didn't, as a matter of public record, I didn't want to say that we decided either of those, but when you look at the strategic plan, and you look at what you can take out of Student Achievement, take out of Policy, even take out of Finance, there's stuff that could be going to the Health and Safety slash Operations.
That's right.
And that would reduce the workload in all of the committees.
That's right.
Yes, I think one of the concerns, just following, piggybacking on what's being said, is that the, what I recall, the Health and Safety Committee in terms of where our discussion was main, it came out of sort of, uh, uh, us wanting to align with the strategic plan.
Absolutely.
So, it, and what we did say is that we would take a look to see, we would look at all of the required functions of each committee to see kind of where Health and Safety Committee could be formed as we aligned it.
Yes.
So in many ways, it is a counterpart to Student Achievement in many ways.
That's, I guess that's...
So it's new, and it's innovative, is what I'm saying, so, yes, sir.
And thank you, and thank you, Ms. Bolton, and I guess that was my point, is that that committee, no offense to us or anyone else, is a little more exciting and new and innovative than it may appear on paper, health and safety, hard stop, make sure your weight is right and your blood pressure's okay. It's, it's an interesting, I just, I don't know if that came across.
So maybe, maybe one way to look at this is, because they are similar in scope, similar, not exactly, is look at those people, we have Bowers, you're on both of those right now. Would you be willing to come off one of those?
Yes.
Don't surrender.
I don't want to surrender, I really want both. Because that's where my passion is. Achievement gaps, preschool.
High school.
Uh, socio-emotional.
Wait, for, for what?
For student achievement, but then you have the socio-emotional component that could go into health and safety. So I am very passionate about both. Yeah, but if I came off of health and safety, I only leave Bolton. So that means that I will have to come off of student achievement.
What, we, we only, write down, we have two people on health and safety.
I know.
So we need three people. Messer, any interest? You want, you're on student, you have, you said finance, did you say finance?
Yeah, I mean, that's just the other, that's just the two.
But then you have, you have, you're on student achievement and health and safety. I mean, student achievement as well.
It's just, you know, I haven't served on that one.
Student achievement, yeah.
Yeah, student achievement, so I would like to serve on that if possible. And I did put that, that is my first choice.
Well, no, that
Well, I put if needed on policy and I'm on that.
I gave up student achievement.
I didn't even have policy down.
Okay. So you did not say finance, right? You want to get on.
No.
So we have four. Okay, then, okay, so I'm gonna follow that same line of thinking, Mr. Lindy, you're on finance and student achievement. Well, you're on two. He's on two.
Would you be willing to move?
Or do you want to move? Can you move on one? Or are you willing to move on one?
Was that for me, Carolyn?
Yes.
My, because this is so new, my preference is to share where I think I could add some value, but also say in the same breath that I do trust you and a stalemate to make whatever decision you think is right and wherever I could play the best role. And I'm, I'm excited to dig in wherever that is. I think the, the experience as a teacher and trainer of teachers is the draw for student achievement and I'm the weird guy who likes math is the, is the draw for finance.
Okay, so where's your second choice, Mr. Messer?
Well, the only two I have is here.
Okay, but then we have four on this committee.
Madam Chair, it was an interesting gender thing, I noticed that all the ladies, the women, the girls, signed up for three or more committees and the guys signed up for two. That is, I just thought I'd put that out there.
Okay, are we at a stalemate? Are we ready to move on? Do you want me to just go on in a, a point?
I think that's great.
Okay. Mr. Morosky?
I'll just say that I think the racial makeup of these committees matters. And when we make that decision, I think it matters in a, a board that, you know, doesn't necessarily reflect the district. And I'm a part of that, I mean, I'm pointing the finger myself, so I just want to make, I feel the need to say that. And I think that should influence the appointments.
Well,
Well, it's only one.
I was gonna say.
It's only one influence, it's me, I mean, I'm the only influence.
You gotta be on every committee.
Okay, all right. Hold on, give me one second. We still only have, I still only have policy committee one, I mean.
And I gave up health and safety.
But Melanie, I really don't think you should give up health and safety.
You were passionate about health and safety, you and I both were.
I really don't.
I would I would prefer health and safety, but I could, of course, I've been doing policy forever, so.
You should stay on health and safety to help figure it out.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna read this to this, I'm, I'm a little discombobulated. Finance committee, we have Bates, Bolton, Lindy. And Messer. Policy, we have Bates and Morosky. Did you want to change? If, if you leave policy, Morosky's gonna have to do it by himself.
This would, that would be exciting, he's signing up.
I'm in. I got some ideas for you, Mike.
The board wills me to be on policy, I would defer to the will of the board, but sa, health and safety would be my second choice.
Health and safety you need. Madam Chair, would you be willing to serve on?
Yes. I'll be willing to serve if it helps balance it out. I can go to policy.
But we still have the two fours. That doesn't help.
Well, I think we're giving down.
Put me back on health and safety and fill policy.
Okay.
Health and safety then is three.
Okay, health and safety has one, two, three, so far, we have three. Policy? You still want policy, did you move? We have two, Morosky and Jones. Finance, Bates, Bolton, Lindy, and Messer. We have four. Bolton. Okay, is there anybody who want, we need one more person to come off in, in, from student achievement? Otherwise, I'm just going to a point, that's just it.
Could I ask a question about the whole preschool piece? From a standpoint of a liaison and the preschool committee, I know it's not a board standing committee, but knowing that we're facing a levy this year and knowing that I think Mr. Messer has been expressing a great interest in the, in the preschool efforts for some obvious reasons beyond even his own family. I mean, in a way, that preschool thing could be bigger than it has been. And if he would, I mean, I, and I know there, there are other people on the preschool, I guess, I don't see it here, but you know what I'm saying? I just think that's gonna be huge this year, that would count as Mr. Messer's second. He might be doing more of those meetings than our board meetings.
I, I'm not understanding that because
Okay.
you're talking about the assignment that, that's at the bottom of the page?
Yeah.
That committee doesn't exist, though.
I, I, I understand, but knowing that we're facing a preschool levy and knowing that we're trying to have additional and, and, and more periodic communication about that, more liaison with that, as well as a levy campaign for preschool, I just think that that's gonna be larger than it has been in the past. I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Bowers?
Are you making that comment, board member Bolton, to say that if, if board member Messer served on one committee, this could be a supplemental committee? For him because of all the work, is that what you're trying to say?
It could be a second, it could be the se, his second committee.
That's what I was asking, okay.
Yes.
So, okay, I'm, I'm just gonna ask a general question.
Sure.
How long, Ms. Bates, how long have you been on finance?
I've been on finance. I don't know, I, I can, I know I've been, I was off it when Vanessa was on the board.
Okay, but for a number of years.
Well, I'm the longest serving, so this is my 19th year.
Okay, all right, Ms. Bolton, how long have you been on finance?
I've been on the board 12 years, I think I've been on finance on and off for at least seven of those years.
Okay. All right.
And I also began the policy committee 19 years ago. I've served on that for 18 years.
Okay. So are we ready for the appointments? Is that where we're at?
It depends what they are.
Well, once, 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 the, the bylaws say.
Yeah, you appoint, but we vote.
Yeah, I know, but I'm telling you. And I, I can tell you how I'm justifying these, but I just wanna, I'm, what I'm checking to make sure that we have people, enough people. And I keep asking you the same question, are you here? Okay. You see what predicament they put me in? I guess it's my job, right?
Can I make a comment on that, Carolyn? I just, from my perspective, it doesn't have to be a predicament or a bad thing. I think we trust your leadership and I think you'll put folks where we can make the biggest difference.
Right, so, um, what I think, let me just go down the line, give you what my suggested assignments are. For finance committee, Ben Lindy, Ryan Messer, and either Bates or Bolton. Okay, so that's where I am, right now. On policy committee, Jones, Morosky, and Bolton. And the reason why I'm asking for that shift is because you're wanting to be on the health and safety committee, which is a new committee. It's a new committee. And I think, given your experience on student achievement, that might help with the health and safety committee. So maybe you could balance out with policy, that's why I did that. Not asking people to agree or disagree, but this is where I am right now. On student achievement, Bowers. Hold on, wait a minute, I did something wrong. Let me back up, Morosky, Messer, and Bowers. And then on health and safety, Lindy, Bolton, and Bates. So who, Pam? Is it that we have two?
Oh, it's just because you don't, if you take your name off there, if Pam went there, that would be her second.
Yes, okay, there you go, thank you. So on policy, Pam, that's right, that's what I was thinking, I just didn't see it. So if you go back, that way you get one of the things you really want and then policy. Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am.
We have to do the, help me out with where I am.
Okay.
I'm not on health and safety, you've moved me to policy.
I did not, hold on.
Oh, you are on health and safety.
You are on health and safety.
Health and safety and finance?
Policy.
That's
Hold on.
That's a nightmare. That, no, sorry. Bates and Bolton probably have to be on finance.
I, I said, I, for finance, either you or Melanie.
And then you said Bolton.
And then I, what I, okay. So she's on two here. Bolton, I think I added your name to policy, yeah, so we need to fix that part.
If I'm not on finance, I'm only on one committee.
Are we running short? I don't get it.
You, you had Bolton here and here, that was two.
Okay, so Bolton, Bolton on policy and health and safety.
You probably need a clean sheet.
I am, I have one.
Here, oh. I, I really want to try to insist that I be on finance. I've given up my first choice of everything, but I think I am needed on finance particularly.
I think
And I think that works.
Well, I don't know, let me see, health and safety I have, because Bates wanted to move, Bolton, Lindy. Bowers.
Mine's totally wrong.
Messer.
Superintendent has a clean. Yeah, she's got, she got
She got it.
And Morosky.
Oh, she has it written down.
And that can be, it's Ben. And that's where you put, you have Messer.
This is what I have.
Bolton, Bates took her name off.
Bates is on
One, two. Two.
Okay, this is what I have. Did you want to, let's go through, I want to go through all of them. I have, okay, I have Bates on finance and health and safety. Okay? Bolton on three committees. Finance, policy, and health and safety. So it is what it is, Lindy, finance and health and safety. Messer, finance, student achievement. Morosky, policy, student achievement. Bowers, policy, student achievement. So maybe I do need to get on, so we, Eve, Ms. Bolton, you're the only one with three.
Great, thank you.
And, and you want to you want to come, if you come off of policy, then that leaves two. I am happy to join policy, but we still have four people on finance. My suggestion for continuity is that either you or Ms. Bates stay, one person stays, one person goes to a different.
Mike has a question.
No, I would, it, it just, it, you addressed it sort of, it just seemed to me that it wouldn't you dropping off of a committee wouldn't solve the issue because there's still four people on finance.
I'm sorry?
You dropping off wouldn't solve the issue because there's four people on finance, it comes down to
It comes down
who comes off of finance.
It comes off of finance, right. And, and my point is, I do believe we need some continuity on there
Oh, sure.
from people. And the people with the most tenure, Bates and Bolton, is what I'm asking, one person can stay, one person can come on. Well, and I have, and Eve, I have, if Eve comes off, if Ms. Bolton comes off of policy, then that leaves a gap on policy. Unless Ms. Bates wants to go back to policy.
Well, again, I go back to the two most influential committees are finance and student achievement. So the board should have the opportunity, board members should have the opportunity to serve on one or the other.
One or the other?
Because those are the two mediaist committees. That's my personal opinion.
Well, I don't know how we balance that.
Madam Chair, I, I really do think, knowing what we're facing in preschool, I honestly do think that the preschool assignment, which is not one of these committees, is going to be an incredibly full-time opportunity and for service and
What, what is your suggestion?
I think Mr. Messer should be the person that's gonna be our liaison person and our communication person and our levy person for preschool.
Mr. Messer, that's, that's an option for you, for considerations.
I think, and it should count
And if you don't, then you don't, I mean
And it should count as one of his two committees, that's how important that's gonna be.
Mr. Morosky.
To that point, uh, clarification for everyone, I only served on one committee last year, I don't know what the hard and fast rule, there's no hard and
Two.
I was on one committee last year and for the whole year, and everybody knew it, and it was never like a thing, so.
I was wondering about that, I don't know, I don't remember what happened, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, like, I, if somebody drops off finance and just wants to be on one committee, or there's also an opportunity for Mr. Messer or there's also an opportunity for Mr. Messer or Mr. Lindy to move to Policy if they wanted to, and that would clear this up too, if Ms. Bates and Ms. Bolton don't wanna flip a coin or, or whatever the case may be. I'm just saying there's a spot on Policy too, which is, I'm gonna have to disagree with my esteemed colleague Ms. Bates as much as I hate to do that, but I think Policy's really important. Maybe not as much as the other two, but it's a really important committee. Um, it's not maybe the hottest or flashiest, but it, it sort of is the bedrock of the whole thing. So, there's an opportunity there for a person to come to, to hang out with us.
I'm not sure, yes, go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
I just wanna comment and get clarity on, on Board Member, um, who are you, Bolton?
All day long.
Recommendation about the, if the preschool committee is non-existent, are we saying that we are creating that committee for somebody to serve on because it's not existing right now? I understand, I know what you're talking about, about coming up, but how do you go about assigning someone to a committee that doesn't exist?
I'd like to clarify it this way. I think all of us that have sat here for the duration of preschool promise and the inability of the district and the preschool promise and group and the community, all, you know, we built that plane while it was flying. And we have spent at least two years worrying about the communication piece. And we are now facing a levy challenge to get that renewed possibly. I mean, that's not a decision, but this year, I'm, I'm going to say preschool expansion, preschool communication and liaison between the district, the Board, and the preschool promise Board, and the executive committee that may or may not exist. I think that's, I think that's one person that can do that. And Mr. Messer has a, has an interest in it and has been very much involved with it recently.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I don't agree that we need to make that appointment based on that premise. But, here's a, here's an idea, and, and I think it might resolve our concern. Because what I've tried to do is give people one committee that they want and one committee that they not, don't necessarily want. So, it would balance if Mr. Lindy, if you would, um, move from Finance to Policy. We'd have three people.
No.
You're, you're getting, um...
No, that doesn't balance.
How, why not?
Because he wanted, she got moved to Health and Safety already.
Which is one he didn't want.
Oh.
I think Mr. Messer would be really good at Policy.
Well, you know, what it boils, what it boils down to really is, is I'm going back to my first one. We can't, we have, Ms. Bolton, you're on three. I have you on three, you don't wanna do Policy.
Take her off Policy. Mr. Messer would be good at Policy maybe.
Somebody's gotta move to Policy.
I'd be happy to come off, um, Health and Safety and go to Policy, if that's better. I have a feeling it's not helpful.
Oh, great, thank you, can I go to Health and Safety?
But, uh, I wanted to offer.
Can I go to Health and Safety? No, then you'll mess up my chart. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
All right.
She wants to, you wanna do Health and Safety?
But, I want, I wanted to give, I think it's important for our new members to have some exposure to, I mean, the things that they want to do. And, and I hear you, you didn't get Student Achievement, Mr. Lindy, you got Finance. I'm still having a hard time understanding why we, why Ms. Bates and Ms. Bolton both wanna be on Finance. I, I don't understand that. I don't understand.
Well, I, I'll speak for myself. I began the work with the organization of the Turk by, uh, bringing it forward on, to the Audit Committee and recruiting Audit Committee members. I also, um, have introduced a statistician to the Treasurer and Legal Counsel, who has, uh, been able to bring some of his work and advice, uh, on the abatement and TIF issue.
Okay.
I mean, that's, but that doesn't mean that if I got hit by a Metro bus that, you know, Finance wouldn't go on either.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, your position?
I think Finance requires expertise that some of the other committees may not necessarily require. I think we're facing a significant levy. I think we're facing a significant need to have somebody that understands the finances as we go through our growth experience. And we have to try to find money, so between the levy and the growth effort and between also negotiations, if you will, with six of our, of our unions, it's probably not the time for somebody that is on Finance not to have the kind of, uh, historical knowledge.
Okay. So, uh, but you do wanna be on Health and Safety. That was one of your preferences.
If, if Health and Safety has too many...
It doesn't. I'm asking you, was that one of your preferences?
Not really, I put all of these were preferences, but I, if, if, I'll, I'll do Policy if you have too many for, uh, Health and Safety.
I, I do not, I have too many for Finance. And what I have right now, if I had to make the selection, Ms. Bolton, I'm gonna move you to Policy. If I had to make that selection. Since you got one of the ones that you put your name in, I would move you from that. I think the people who are on there would do a fine job on Finance. I think we have the expertise on there. That would mean, that would give us three members in each committee and everybody gets at least one of their choices.
Who's on Policy?
Morosky, Bowers, and Bolton.
Bowers went there.
Yeah. Ms. Bolton?
So, the two committees I would be most interested in, I will not be on. I'm not sure about the seniority piece here.
There is no seniority.
No kidding, obviously, or expertise.
There's, there, the, the bylaws doesn't call for seniority. It does, I, I mean, that, that's what makes it hard about trying to give everybody the primary choices. It, it has to balance somehow, I don't get it.
But I got neither of my primary choices.
What, your choices were Finance and Student Achievement?
I'm not gonna, I don't wanna be divisive or, or negative.
But you put your name on every single one.
In order for this negotiations to take place.
Okay, what, what are your choices?
My first two choices were Finance and Student Achievement. And you may have mentioned that I'd given up Student Achievement...
Yes.
In the interest of whatever. So I do think that I should have at least one of my choices. Now, if that's not the will of the Chair or the Board, I will do whatever you ask me to do. God knows that's happened before.
All right. Here we go. Now, what did I do with this one?
That's your three.
Here's three.
Oh, then I would serve yours.
Yes. Please do that, please. Okay, here we go. Finance Committee, Bates, Bolton, Lindy. Policy, Morosky, Bowers, Messer. Student Achievement, Bowers, Messer, Morosky. Health and Safety, Bates, Bolton, Lindy.
Good.
Okay. You know, this is what we do, I'm sorry. This is what happens in our organizational meeting, ever since I've been here. But anyway, um, okay. We got it, all right. So, let's move to the appointment process at the bottom and then we should be done. We're already late, so let's try to do this quickly. And basically, the process is, as we go down the list, these are the Board Organization, um, the entities that we are partners with, and we, we have a liaison role or an advisory role with these particular entities. So, um, uh, let, let me know, let me see what I have here. Okay. For the Cincinnati Recreation Commission, I have, uh, one interested party, Ms. Bates. Ms. Bates, any other interest, Cincinnati Recreation? Ms. Bates? Okay. O D E Educators Standards Board. I have, uh, expressed interest, Ms. Bolton.
That's, thank you, that's an appointment, and it's a two-year appointment.
It's appointed by the O E S B, Ohio Education?
Actually by the O S B A, but that's, O E S, O E S B is the title of it.
And, uh, can you, in a couple of sentences, clarify what that is?
Yes, there's, uh, about thirty people on the committee. All the, um, uh, unions, uh, from the, the teachers' unions and others, as well as, uh, higher education, uh, serve on the committee. And they're part of the Ohio Education Standards Board that determines, uh, job, uh, job, not just descriptions, but licensure, as well as they are in charge of the rewriting, and they've just completed it, the, um, uh, Ohio Teachers', uh, Evaluation System. And there's only one person on it that represents the school districts of Ohio, and that's your Cincinnati representative, me.
Okay. Any other interests?
Can't.
Oh, well, it's appointed, but we have to go with the same appointment? Is that what the, the practice is?
It's two years.
Because they decide. Okay. So, um, okay, so then, um, Ms. Bolton is, will be the appointee with the Ohio School Boards Association Appointments. All of those categories that you see under there are appointed by O S B A. And, and with some of them, and we can talk about which ones, um, we recommend a, a, a person or what have you, and then they decide, um, if they want to appoint you or not. So we'll go through and, um, address those. So, the Board of Trustees, Southwest Region Executive Committee, I, I have served on that as our representative and, and, uh, as President of the Board. I would love to serve, I haven't served on it that long, so, um, I would love to serve. Anybody else interested at least? Okay. The Board Member Cabinet? Ms. Bolton, I have you as being, you are the appointment?
By O S B A.
Okay. What does the Board Member Cabinet do? What is the Cabinet?
It's, uh, like, three or four meetings a, a year to meet with the President of the O S B A. And so they, it's about fifteen people.
So how, how do you get, get even in the running to be appointed?
I have no idea.
So they just called you and said, Ms. Bolton, we want you?
They sure did.
Okay.
They probably got tired of me worrying about the report card.
Okay. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Madam President, is there any way for us to get information about all of these committees?
We have, I sent you guys something in the email, it's been a little while ago. It looks like, I don't know where it is, it's buried in these papers. But I did send something to you all a while ago, so we can do it.
Explanation of all of these?
Yeah, with the Board Appointments. I think, you know, what, what I'm hearing Ms. Bolton say is that these are all where they call her up, they call up folks and say, do you wanna serve? But I think what we have to do at some point is really consider i- if there's a, a chance for other people to participate so that we can again balance the workload and the involvement. So, as we go through here, please, please consider some of these other appointments. Okay. Okay. I, let me, let me just stop because somebody passed me a note. We're, we're concerned about the kids being here...
They gotta perform.
Having to, um, go to school tomorrow. My, what is the Board's preference? I have no problem, are they here as part, they're here as part of the regular meeting program though, is that correct?
Yes, they are here to perform for all of you.
Okay. Is it possible, I, this is really weird for me. Can we suspend this and do this after the, the business meeting? Is that possible? Sure. Ms. Wagner?
Take a hiatus and come back to it.
And come back to it?
Yeah.
Yes. So do we need a motion to suspend the meeting?
Recess?
Recess? Okay. So why don't we recess this meeting and go into our, uh, and we'll enter into our regular meeting and then come back to this? Thank you. Okay. Take a deep breath.
You know, Carolyn?
Yes.
I don't think that the Capitol Conference Planning Committee...
Exists.
Exists.
I don't even, I don't think it does.
And diversity and equity, that's, you, you have to put like your name in and they...
Right.
Right?
We, we do have one, uh, expressed interest in that, so...
And the Legislative Liaison?
We do, we need that.
You need two people?
We need, we don't need two.
You only need one.
We don't, we only need one for that, um...
The federal relations thing, that, my appointment is over after February. But they appoint later for the next year.
Okay. Can we leave this meeting for a minute and then you come back to the...
I'm just saying to expedite it, so that...
Okay.
Is this gonna take another few minutes to say?
Excuse me, we're gonna go through the meeting, we are going to start. Okay. I call to order the January sixth, two thousand twenty business meeting of Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
Oh, gosh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Morosky?
Present.
President Jones? Here. Thank you. For the purposes, um, do I need a motion to revise the agenda? I don't, I don't really wanna revise, I wanna change the order.
Was this a presentation, is that what it is?
Yes, this is, I would like to, um, revise the agenda to have our presentation done before we get into the business of the meeting. That would allow our young people to do what they do and then they can go home, if they choose. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose? Thank you. Okay. Superintendent, would you please introduce our presenter?
Gladly. So as you can see, we have some young people from Cincinnati Public Schools here to perform for us this evening. This is actually a report on, on our strategic plan, Student Center Decision Making. And under the direction of Dr. Izzy Rutnick, um, he's brought some young people to come and present. And he's also gonna talk about the Finance, the Fine Arts Program over the last school year. Finances on my brain. Um, you may remember that back in the fall, Cincinnati Public Schools hosted its first international jazz, um, festival in which we had, um, world-renowned musicians meeting with our kids, working with our kids, and, um, performing with them on stage, and so this is quite exciting. We always like to be able to present our young people in front of the Board, not just academically, but also to show their talents as far as artistic ability. And so, I'm going to introduce Dr. Izzy Rutnick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's my pleasure to invite up the world-famous Cincinnati Public Schools Elementary Jazz Academy.
So this is the first year for this Jazz Academy. These are students from across the district under Dr. Rutnick's leadership. So it's very cool to see how they have progressed in just, um, a few short months.
I, while they're getting set up, um, I've just been informed, Board Members, you are certainly welcome to go down to that front row of seats if you'd like to, or you could stay where you are. It's up to you. It's up to you.
So can we just take a second with the focus where it needs to be? I'd like each one of these amazing young musicians in grades four to six to just introduce themselves and tell each of you how long they've been playing their instrument for. We'll start with Aiden.
Hello, my name is Aiden, and this is my third year playing the trumpet.
Um, hello, my name is Azaya, and this is my third year playing the trumpet. Oh, I go to Frederick Douglass.
Hello, I'm Fernando, and I've been playing the saxophone for two years. North Avondale.
Hi, my name is Anita, I've been playing the saxophone for two years, and I'm from the Academy of Word Languages.
My name is Remington, and I've been playing tenor saxophone for four months, and I go to Dater Montessori.
Hello, my name is Sojudo San, uh, I've been playing the trombone for two years, and I go to Dater Montessori.
Hello, my name is Israel DC, and I played the trombone for one year, and I go to Pleasant Hill Academy.
Hello, my name is Agnes, and I played the flute for two years, and I go to Dater Montessori.
Hello, my name is Marley, I go to Dater Montessori, and this is my second year playing clarinet.
Hello, I'm Willa, I've been playing bass for four months, and I go to Pleasant Ridge Montessori.
Hello, my name is Saint Joe, I've been playing the piano for two years. I'm at A W L School.
Hello, my name is Jamira Dixon, and I've been playing the drum for eight years, and I go for, and I go to Chase Elementary.
So I have some exciting news to share with everybody, I don't think anybody knows this yet. This group has been invited to perform. They are the only elementary group ever to be invited to perform at the Eastern Illinois University Jazz Festival. In February, we have a sponsor who's going to pay for the trip. It's really a testament to the unbelievable talent and just amazing students that we have in Cincinnati Public.
So, as we're waiting to regroup, and before the students leave, we want to acknowledge the families who came tonight to support the young people. Thank you so much. I had the pleasure of coming down to SCPA when they performed down there with the International Jazz Group. They were marvelous. I've never enjoyed myself more. That was fantastic, yep. Thank you so much for being patient with us.
Okay, um, do I have a few minutes to finish my presentation? I will make it short. We've accomplished so much in the last few years here in Cincinnati Public Schools, thanks to the support of all of you, getting musical instruments into the hands of our kids. It's all about equity and access, okay? What you might not know is professional musicians from around the city, they come by to the Kennedy Heights Arts Center every week and mentor some of these students. They give them private lessons, they, you know, perform for them. And it's really an amazing opportunity. So very, very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. But it goes so much further than the students that you see here. We have new programming that I'd like to tell you about just this semester that's blossoming throughout the entire district. So let me tell you a little bit about that. These are all the performers that performed for you. Of course, the creation of the CPS Elementary Jazz Academy, creation of a new after-school arts program at ten underserved elementary schools. And that's what the board and I have been working on, to make sure that we have after-school arts programming at every elementary school. Creation of an after-school string instrument mentoring program at Euler and Withrow. Very, very proud of that with the support of the Carlson Burn Music Program. All the things we're talking about, bringing in community partners and arts partners. We have a wonderful new school-wide drumming program, I don't know if you've heard about it, at South Avondale. But every morning, the whole school gets together, and they come together, they prepare to get ready for their day, and part of what they do is a musical part under the direction of a marvelous, marvelous percussionist here in Cincinnati, Liz, Liz Wu. And she has them creating, building, and performing their own instruments and creating their own beats. And that goes back to the four tenants that we emphasize from the National Core Art Standards. Create, perform, respond, and connect. So whenever you go into an arts classroom in CPS, I want you to be able to see our students creating, performing, connecting, or responding, okay? And that's the engagement, that's the powerful engagement piece that the arts can bring to Cincinnati Public Schools. We also have a fourth grade program for fourth graders at Hayes Porter, reaching out to a lot of our schools that haven't had some of the rich artistic programming. We want all our kids to have arts, all of our kids to have opportunities. Thank you. I'm pleased to announce that working with two organizations, Visionaries and Voices, who you've heard about, and Melodic Connections, they are going to start working with our special needs students. One of the areas that we have a lot of room to grow in is making sure that we provide artistic opportunities specifically for our CPS students with special needs. And these two organizations do that better than anybody else. So with your support, we're going to bring both of them in this next semester to work with some of our CPS kids. We have new band programs at Roberts Academy in Riverview East. And that means band instruments, music stands, music chairs. And it's phenomenal, it is absolutely phenomenal to see the kids get an opportunity to play music and do it in a situation where, you know, they haven't had access to trombones, trumpets, French horns, clarinets, flutes. So, and we have a wonderful new teacher there who's doing amazing work. One of the things we're working very, very hard to do is bringing in new qualified teachers who look like our children, who can inspire our children, and can show them, hey, I came from the same background, I did it, so can you. Of course, a continuing program, our Suzuki Strings and Flute Instruction in grades K three. We have that in elementary, in eleven elementary schools currently. Programming in two thousand nineteen twenty has been adapted to meet the needs of each individual school. We are getting away from the cookie cutter approach. And at Rothenburg Preparatory Academy, we had some challenges there, and we had to adjust the program so we could get a lot of kids participating, and it's working. This is one of the areas that I'm most proud of. When I came on board as the Fine Arts Curriculum Manager a few years ago, our gifted arts assessment consisted of a few sparse kinds of testing of a few students throughout the district. In the past three years, we've been able to really improve on that. We have a new arts provider that is working with us called Aliven Arts. Three wonderful women run that organization, and they are dedicated to providing artistic support for the needs of our CPS kids. And I'm happy to tell you that in this fall, over the last three months, we have increased our gifted arts nominations from our teachers by forty-five percent over last year. We will increase the gifting, gifted screening locations over two thousand eighteen nineteen by thirty-five percent. We are going in to the schools where the kids are. We're not going to make them get on buses, we're not going to make them go to quadrant sites. We're going to them. We bring in artists from all over Cincinnati to evaluate our kids in the hopes of getting them identified, okay? And when they're identified, what happens? Well, the first thing that happens is they all get invited to our expanded Gifted Arts Day on Saturday, April twenty-fifth. The music students will inhabit this whole building. We've already got all the rooms over in the former Mayerson, they're all reserved. We've got this space reserved. We expect to have about two hundred and twenty of our music kids here. And they'll have the opportunity to work with professional musicians, hear about career opportunities. We'll have meetings with parents so that we can tell parents about artistic programming, some of it free of charge, and resources for their kids that are available in Cincinnati. This is, hasn't really been done, you know, before. The, the visual arts students will go to our partner, Art Academy of Cincinnati, and our dance students will go to the Cincinnati Ballet. So again, giving our kids the opportunity to be inspired and to work with professional artists. This is such a rich city with so many wonderful musicians, dancers, and visual artists. And we want our kids to be inspired by them. We are making so much progress, and we are emphasizing expanding performing opportunities. It's not enough for our kids just to be able to sing a few tunes in the elementary classes. We need to get them out, we need to have them working with other kids. That was the impetus behind what you just saw, bringing the kids together from across the district, realizing that they're just not in separate schools, but they're part of Cincinnati Public Schools, and bringing them together. When you bring them together, the result is pretty powerful, don't you think?
Absolutely.
So I will, for the moment, end there and answer any questions that you have.
Yes, do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Thank you, always a highlight of the year to get an update in this area. So thank you for all the exciting programs. Specifically, as you talked about strings, I mean, yeah, strings, and you mentioned Euler. You mentioned some of the other community partners like Visionaries and Voices, et cetera. Are you working all with my Cincinnati?
You know, I did reach out to the amazing force of nature, Eddie Kwan there, and we are going to start getting together and talking about, you know, some partnering possibilities. What they've done there is really, really amazing, and yeah, we're going to be getting together very, very shortly. And I'll be looking forward to actually going up there and seeing the wonderful work that they are doing there.
Yeah, because, and if I could finish, they, as the, one of their recent concerts, I was astonished how many of their students are actually Euler students. So if we're starting a strings at Euler, and they're already doing strings there, it'd be great, kind of bring that together.
Yes.
The second, I think I said this last time, we are in on art city, and it is, it is probably our number one industry in the city of Cincinnati collectively, if you look at Cincinnati compared to so many other cities, we're blessed there. I would really love us to, to be able to say that we have direct partnerships with the Cincinnati Symphony as well as the Opera. Cincinnati Symphony as well as the opera. I think everybody knows the Symphony is one of the most well-funded in the country, and it has been signaled not once, but about a hundred times that they would like to do more with CPS. So if we could explore that sooner than later.
We are currently working with them to put some additional programming. I believe they might be in five or six of our schools right now through their Discoveries Program, but yeah, we need to definitely increase that.
And then with the opera having their one-hundredth anniversary, I think that would be another great partnership that I also know, they have a very keen interest in somehow building a partnership there as well. And then my last point.
Yeah.
You know, getting up, some of the schools up and running and getting them instruments in their hand, I think is great. When I went to Aiken on my last visit, I got a great concert, but then I was disappointed to learn that there were multiple students sharing the same instruments. And I know, as a band kid from fifth on, biggest part of that was my practice outside of when I was at school, so in the evenings and that type of thing. So are there plans to try to get for our students a one-to-one ratio so they can be able to practice like that?
Yes, we've got that at most schools. I rely on the teachers to communicate with me and tell me, Dr. Rudnick, I need five more trombones, I need ten more trumpets. When they communicate that to me, I get busy and make sure they get it. So I'll follow up on that immediately, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Lindy.
This is very quick. I just wanted to say that I'm a proud graduate of Cincinnati Public, and some of my very best friends found their lifelong love for music because of the arts programs here. And I just wanted to say how great it was to see a next generation of kids fall in love with us early, and I want to say thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Ms. Bowers?
Hi, Dr. Rudnick.
Hi.
I just wanted to inquire, you said there were eleven elementary schools that expanded with the strings program?
I said there were eleven elementary schools that, that we were able to get the after-school programming, after-school arts programming into that did not have it last year.
That did not have it, okay.
Yes.
Is there any collaboration with Suzuki programming and this musical programming that's expanded across, I'm going to say, more twenty, Vision 2020 schools?
You know, that's an interesting thought. We haven't really explored that, and that, that is something that we should work more with the Suzuki program, working with the Vision 2020 schools. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Morosky.
Hello, Dr. Rudnick.
Hi.
You know how awesome, I think, these programs are, and I just want to commend you for all the offerings that we do have for students, and while there's always ways we can improve and build, the offerings we have in our urban public school district are not normal. And that's because of your leadership, our dedicated teachers, I see Mr. Black out there, and there's a lot of other ones that are coming to mind. It's really impressive, so I just want to say kudos to you. And I was also curious, this is maybe out of left field, apologize, I'm sure you're not used to that, my colleagues. Aside from School for Creative and Performing Arts, are there other schools, I know there are, but I'm curious like how many, how robust is like the ability to record your music and teaching people that side of the music industry, so to speak, as well?
Yeah.
How pervasive is that?
We don't have many recording facilities at our schools. One thing, we are working with two schools, with Hughes and with Aiken, is a partnership with the Music Resource Center in Walnut Hills, and they come down every semester, and they actually record at the Music Resource Center because they have all the, you know, technology and everything there. But that's an area that we need to improve upon.
That's it, it's just, I know the first time I ever put something, recorded something, I just thought it was the coolest thing ever.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, and then last.
This is always great. Two things, I think it's one of the areas in public affairs, public relations, that we need to express more broadly how much music we actually have in Cincinnati Public. I think people frankly believe the larger national story that we don't have music in our schools. So I would really encourage the Public Affairs Department to think more about that, since we are historically a significant public school system for music curriculum, second only to New York for how long we've had a music curriculum, K-12. The other thing, I just personally want to thank you for also mentioning the Ben Carlson-Burn Foundation. Ben was a student of mine who died way too early, and his family have, you know, kept his thoughts and love of the arts alive, and particularly have not invested it back necessarily into Wyoming, but invested it here because of his commitment to trying to make sure there would be a piano in every building or wherever kids were assembled. So thank you for, again, mentioning Ben, appreciate it. He would be very delighted about tonight.
Ms. Bowers' last comment.
One inquiry, Dr. Rudnick, last year there was a band-to-college kind of initiative with respect to, preferably, Withrow. Is there any updates on how that progress is, the connection, especially toward HBCUs?
We are working very diligently at Withrow. We had some more immediate things to get off the ground, Withrow Sounds Again Program, they had a holiday performance, they had some immediate needs, and I need the feedback of the principal, I need the feedback of the arts faculty. We will be meeting in about three weeks to follow up on that very thing.
Okay. I'll be interested in knowing how that's going.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure, did you all get the Spark magazine from this semester?
Yes.
Okay.
We did.
So kudos to Suzanne Nowell, who's the Fine Arts Coach, who has worked really, really hard on this to document. It's so important that we document the wonderful things that are going on in CPS, whether it's arts, athletics, academics.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you so much.
Questions from the board? Okay. Thank you once again.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, and we appreciate your patience, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, again, I'm making another adjustment in the agenda, we're going to follow the business meeting, however, we're going to ask for the hearing of the public now. So it just, each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium, and I believe we have five speakers. Marlena Brookfield, Laura Dietzel, and Tracy Redding, and then I'll call up the next two.
Good evening, board. It's Monday night, there's a CPS board meeting. Where did you think I was going to be? I just want to welcome our newest board member, Ben Lindy, and want to say that if they haven't started onboarding yet, you have a lot of people who will help, will get you. But I do want to also say that, I have a lot of things I want to say, but I'm really excited for 2020, for CPS. I'm excited to see the progress that we have made and that we will continue to make. I just got really emotional hearing these kids and hearing Izzy speak about all the things we're doing, so I kind of forgot what I was going to talk to you about. But I'm excited, and we're going to keep the strategic plan moving forward. And you know I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And followed by Tracy Redding?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Laura Dietzel, and I'm really impressed that you can say my name correctly because it's often mispronounced. So I am here because my son, Lex Dietzel, attends Spencer Academy for the Gifted, an exceptional student. I kind of wish he was here instead because he's a much better public speaker than I am. I am here because, I'm a crier, so I'm just going to cry through it. Spencer's been amazing for my son. It just has. He was in a great school at Parker Woods-Montessori, and he had a wonderful kindergarten teacher. But he really struggled, even though Parker Woods isn't a huge school, kind of struggled making that transition with all these kids and all these classes. And he was only in one classroom, but the number of students was just overwhelming for him. So to go to Spencer, where it's a school that really meets his need in the size academically, being with peers who are similar to him, has been an amazing experience for him. And I have a thought, well, he's in third grade, we'll give this a try, see how it goes. And it's been wonderful, it's only been two years, but it's been great for him, to the point where I was like, well, we'll look at seventh and eighth grade, and we're going to explore those other options. But honestly, I'm a consultant, I won't speak to what I'm doing, but I'm at Clark, not Clark, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm at Clark-Montessori, they're in a consultant kind of role, and I always thought that's where I'd want him to be. It would be the wrong place for him. And I know a lot about Want Hells, and he, I feel, just would be overwhelmed. And so I really feel like Spencer's great for seventh and eighth grade, and I go, well, what are we going to do for high school? Oh, they're going to do high school, but there's no place for them. There's not enough, there's not a place for the eleventh grade right now. And so it's really hard to think about what the future could be. When we chose to live, we could have lived in a lot of places, and we chose to live in College Hill because Cincinnati Public gave us the magnet program and choice so we can make good decisions for our son. And I would just like Spencer to be there as a high school opportunity, but it's not right now for him. There's not the facilities, there's great staff, there's great vision, there's great intention, but we need the physical structure to be able to make that actually happen for these kids. And they can do great, amazing things, and I'm sure they would do just fine if they went to Walnut or Clark or any of the other amazing schools at Cincinnati Public. I just want Spencer to be there as an option for him. And I feel bad for those who've taken that choice to be there for ninth and tenth grade and don't know what the future holds for them, and Spencer's just not even an option at this point because there's not any room for them. So that's all, I just wanted to share that perspective.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ed Pfaff, next?
Hi, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
My name is Tracy Redding. I am a parent of three students, and I worked for CPS for the last six years, and I currently am a school counselor at Spencer Center. Three years ago, I sat in this room and I watched Nina Genakio present about Spencer with so much hope in my heart about the future for my son. Because, given the experiences that we had had with our oldest child at Walnut, we knew it wasn't the right place for him. And I left here with so much excitement, Miss Genakio made that presentation, and I'll be honest, at the end, I felt like maybe it was too good to be true because it was just such an amazing opportunity. My daughter at the time was attending the Cincinnati Gifted Academy, she was happy, but when I shared what this school was about, she chose to leave that school and come to Spencer because she was so excited about that presentation and what she heard. As a parent and as a staff member, I can say that all of that wasn't too good to be true. Obviously, we are still growing, and there's growing pains if any of us have been involved in a school, Mr. Mott, no, where growing is happening, there are bumps in, you know, divots and things you have to deal with along the way. But overall, it is amazing place. As a school counselor and as a fellow parent, I can't tell you how many kids and parents like she just shared, just talk about how their child finally fits in. They have found their place, they have found their people, and that is what Spencer means to so many different people and families. My own son that I spoke about has blossomed and grown there socially and academically. He is cognitively gifted but has learning disabilities, and we knew, you know, despite Walnut being an amazing place to be, it's not the right fit for all students, and Spencer is his right fit as it is for so many students. And to be honest, my two students, my two children are there now, and if my oldest weren't a year too old, he'd probably be there too, so all four of us would attend there. Ms. Bolton, you said earlier, when you were speaking of preschool promise, that we built the plane while it was flying, and I'll be honest, that's kind of how it feels like at Spencer right now, where we don't know what the future holds. I have parents, you know, I'm a school counselor, so I'm talking to my sophomores and the younger students and parents and families, and they ask me, what are we going to do? Where are we going to be, and are we really going to be able to graduate from here? And I can't tell them an answer, we can't really tell them an answer yet. And it's scary and frustrating, I think, for a lot of families, and even for me, for my own, you know, for my own child especially. I know at the last meeting, there were lots of options that Superintendent Mitchell presented about Spencer and the rest of the schools that are, oh, I didn't get to finish anything, but just really quickly, early college isn't the right option for everyone, it's a great option, but not for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pfaff, followed by Taniqua Oliver?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name's Ed Pfaff, I'm a parent at Hyde Park School. I know most of you throughout the last year. Unlike the last couple of times, I actually have a prepared written speech that I'm going to read, there's a lot of numbers in here, and I don't want to mess any of it up. But first, I wanted to thank Superintendent Mitchell and the administration for acknowledging the space issues at Hyde Park School and for presenting the options during the last board meeting as part of the strategic plan update. Option one from the presentation proposes a much-needed expansion of the school, ideally including multiple classrooms, a new gymnasium, expanded cafeteria, and additional bathrooms. This would expand the building capacity up to six hundred students from the current four-hundred-and-sixty students that attend class in the building today, an increase of a hundred-and-forty students roughly. While our current enrollment hovers around five-hundred-and-forty students total, please remember that we have roughly seventy-five second graders crossing Edwards Road, also known as Ohio State Route, five-sixty-one multiples times each day to attend class in the Eagle Bank Building. Option two would eliminate incoming sibling enrollment for students outside of the attendance boundary in an effort to not expand the building. It would still address the need for an expanded gymnasium, but it would not account for additional classrooms, the expanded cafeteria, or additional bathrooms. This year, we have forty-eight students in the sixth grade Cincinnati Gifted Academy Magnet Program. This program's been phased out over the last few years, and this will be the last year that it's in the Hyde Park School building. We've already seen the sibling enrollment numbers from this program drop significantly in the past two years. The same is also true with the students from the Evanston neighborhood. When HPS reopened, a piece of Evanston was included in the original neighborhood boundary of the school. This has since been removed from the neighborhood boundary, and while we still do have current students enrolled from the Evanston neighborhood, the numbers again have dropped off in the past couple of years. There are currently a hundred and children in the first grade at HPS, and I believe nearly ninety percent of them come within the current neighborhood boundaries of Hyde Park School. Steps have been taken over the years to reduce the out-of-boundary enrollment, and while those numbers have dropped, our neighborhood enrollment is soaring. In fact, we added two new students today, one in second grade and another in third. Tomorrow, we will add three more. A family moving from Oregon has a kindergartner, a third grader, and a fifth grader. Again, thank you for your consideration on the proposed options, and I look forward to working with you all as we implement option number one to expand Hyde Park School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hi, I didn't know I was going to be able to say something, so I just jotted some things down. Well, I am a Cincinnati Public Schools parent, and I also run a poetry workshop that is therapeutic that targets the Trauma to Prison Pipeline. But I wanted to say first before I say anything, since, you know, I saw some people throwing some thanks, my daughter is in ballet with City Gospel, so whoever set that up, thank you so much. That is, my daughter doesn't really talk too much, so, you know, students and children, they learn to talk in their own ways, that's how she likes to talk. She has been walking on her tippy toes since. She has been walking on her tippy toes since forever, like she just, that's just her. I had to teach her how to walk flat on her feet. I have another child that's in Cincinnati Public Schools and he is nine and he's doing really good now, but when I first got here about a year ago, we was recovering as a family from a lot of trauma. And I didn't know if, just to throw the thought out there, just dealing with my son, myself, and also, you know, seeing, trying to put myself in a different perspective with his teacher as far as dealing with my son, you know, coming into the public schools, I was wondering if there's any way I can throw that thought out there for more support for teachers when they are dealing with a student that might need a little extra care. I know there's extra personnel that has been set up, you know, to step in, but I'm wondering, like, do the teachers, you know, are they able to take, you know, a water break or a walk around the halls? Like, who's supporting them? Because I noticed that was really pivotal for my son. His teacher had called me one day and she really needed to unload and I respected that about the same time she wanted to unload at that moment and my son heard everything. So it was a heat of the moment and it just went completely left. So that's something that's really stuck with me. And then what I did want to ask is, what is the school system doing about trauma with students? And how can we help students get out of survival mode so that way they can begin to learn? Because I noticed some scores with Cincinnati Public Schools are not very appealing and I've seen a lot of trauma here. So I'm wondering, how much attention is that getting? So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes our speakers for hearing of the public. And when we give these back, I'm going to ask that we follow up on just the questions. She left her phone number on here, so if somebody could follow up, Superintendent, if we could make sure that that happens, that would be great. Okay, thank you. So have a little bit of a glitch here, okay? Because we went back and we're going back and forth. But the reality of it is, we cannot move forward with the regular agenda until we finish the organizational chart because all of our resolutions are tied to the decisions that we make on the chart. So we're going to come out of this meeting, finish the chart, which shouldn't take us that long, okay? Then we'll go back and finish the business meeting and then we'll go home and have dinner and go to bed. Okay? All right. So if we can go back, maybe a glass or two. Okay, all right. Okay. So here we are again, we're under Ohio School Board Association appointments, we're on Capitol Conference Planning Committee. I do not think that they, I'm not sure if they do that anymore. I don't.
They had it last year and I do not believe that they have it this year. It's, it was during that transition when they moved from four days to three days. I think that's when they had it. So I think that can be eliminated.
Okay, so we'll eliminate that. Diversity and Equity Committee. We had one, at least one person express interest to me, Mr. Lindy. Do I hear another interest?
I would be interested. Well, I'm interested, but I think because it's a three-year term, I might be excluded from that, so.
You might be excluded?
Because I'm on a two-year.
No, you wouldn't be.
Okay, all right, well.
Can I, can I, I mean, or up to you, Carolyn?
Yes, please.
Just to share with everybody, we share with Carolyn, I'm happy to go anywhere on any of these, genuinely. And so, you know, Pam or Carolyn, if you're interested in the Diversity and Equity Committee, more than fine, wherever I'm useful.
Okay. I, I will not, I'm not expressing interest in that. I was, but my plate is full. Okay. So what we could actually do, I mean, you can submit two names, but my sense is if they appoint, we did that last year and I was the appointment from this board, but they didn't accept us. So they have that option and we need to let them know tomorrow because they're waiting on us, okay, to make their appointments. So I'll submit them and we'll follow up and see what they offer. Okay. Federal Relations Network, First Congressional District?
That's, that's an appointment as well and it probably be for a new appointment after February. I'm currently that First Congressional District rep.
Okay, so you will continue and then how will we know when the appointment is up?
I'll, I'll be very happy to tell everybody when that is, it's kind of hard to do. But it will be ending on February would be my term and I know that Mr. Marowski is interested in that. But again, that, we're going to hope that they appoint an urban district from the First Congressional District. That we were the first to do that, I think. So we want to emphasize that. So put my name to conclude this term and then if Mr. Marowski or somebody else is interested in the.
Yes, got it. Okay, I also want to make sure that people understand with most of these appointments that current, that people are currently serving in, they are terms. So the reason why you're hearing Ms. Bolton's name a lot is because she's in the current term. And so when it expires, then we would have to reappoint to those committees, just so you know. Okay, Legislative Liaison, do we need two people on that? Mr. Marowski, you're expressing an interest? Okay, any other interests? Okay, Mr. Marowski. Urban School District Advisory Network, anybody can attend, is there anybody serving on that now? I believe I was the alternate.
Yes.
Is there anybody who has an interest in that?
I'm on it now as a result of the report card piece.
Okay, are, any other interest in that one?
I have a question.
It's a good one.
Point of clarification. What are the responsibilities of it? Like the meetings, have time?
Meet quarterly and it's school districts that are not just like the urban eight, but it's about the 60 or 70 school districts that kind of claim to be urban but are smaller and it's really where there's great diversity. So there's a range from around the state. And right now, they've been championing the, the report card reform has been an issue with them and then they'll move on to others as well.
For OHSAA?
Please?
For OHSAA? Or you're talking about the.
Urban.
Urban.
Urban school.
Sorry, 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 okay.
Sorry.
I'd be more than happy to.
It's a good group.
Yeah. I mean, why not?
Okay, so question, Ms. Bolton, are you still in your term?
It's, it's not, I just show up.
You just show up?
That's not a term.
Okay.
And all are welcome.
Okay.
I just love that drive to Columbus.
Okay, any other interest then, Mr. Marowski? Okay.
Yeah, I'm into that.
All right. Ohio High School Athletic Association?
Is there any other interest in Mr. Marowski?
I think I, I think I paused. Okay. School Board Liaison to Ohio High School Athletic Association. Any interest in that? We didn't have that. I believe that was Mr. Davis last year, wasn't it? Okay, any interest? No?
This would be good.
This would be good, Pam?
Where, where is this?
I don't know, we can find out. We, we don't know.
Yeah, she's.
We'll put your name on there.
She's a mom of an athlete.
Okay, I'm, I'm moving. State Report Card Reform Group, Ms. Bolton, I have you on that. Is it an appoint, it's appointed? When's your term up?
Probably the end of this school year and we also have an administrator too that's in that group as well.
Well, we don't appoint her.
I know.
Or him. Okay. All right. Okay. Student Achievement Leadership Team, there are, is that one appointment? I don't know much about that, but I don't know if, let's see, Bolton and Messer, Bolton and Marowski.
That's a question.
Would, yes.
That's new, isn't it?
It's been around, I just don't know.
I'm not on it.
I don't know, is Student Athletic Leadership Team?
No. It's a student achievement group, I'm not quite sure.
I'm willing to take my name off of that.
Me too, I don't know what it is.
Okay.
I'll take my name off.
Can we, I think we, we need to, I mean, is it on that sheet, Ms. Bowers? Is it, is the definition, is the description?
Yes, you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Student Achievement Leadership Team, the team directs OSBA's efforts to help school boards emphasize and improve student achievement. Team responsibilities include distributing information, researching ideas to assist student achievement efforts by local school boards, seeking the cooperation and partnership of other organizations, individuals whose efforts are aimed at improving a high-quality education for all students, providing training programs for school board members on how to build community support for educational programs, and encouraging community participation and education to help students improve academic results. Team members participate in SALT activities and encourage other board members to do so as well. SALT members will attend three meetings per year in Columbus. Appointees will serve four-year terms. Click here to view the SALT.
All right. Okay. Any interest in the SALT committee? Okay. Activities beyond the classroom, we need only one, not three, one.
I put my name on that one.
You want that one?
I.
You did? Yes, Mr. Messer, you did. If there's no other interest, that's, that's you. Okay. The Business Advisory Council, interest? We, is there two? Is this a primary and an alternate or two representatives?
Are we required to have, we are required?
We are required to have somebody appointed.
One or two?
One or two.
I think it's one, I think it's one.
I'm happy to do this or others, so if you need somebody, put me down. If it's not helpful, pass.
Well, okay. It's Ben Lindy.
That would be a good one.
Council of Great City Schools, one CPS rep, even though all can attend.
I would send my name.
Melanie?
Right, and the, the deal with this is that we're all members, but there are two meetings that are included in our fee and if we don't send the, the person whose name is on there, then we forfeit that $325.
Right.
So, and one's in March and one's in October. But anyone's welcome to go to either of those, but the representative from the board sits on the Board of Directors. So the Board of Directors is made up of the superintendent of every school district and one board member. So that's the other part that you also attend that meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So moved.
So moved, it's you, okay.
But I hope other people come.
Yeah. Hopefully we can. Okay, so the Preschool Expansion Partnership Committee had gone pretty much defunct because we did sort of some restructuring. But what I'm hearing is interest in perhaps talking about how we move forward with this given the issue 44. So rather than make an assignment right here, and I think the suggestion was that Ryan might want to be connected to that, but on our Saturday agenda, if you haven't seen it, I, I did add that as a preliminary conversation. So maybe we can have a discussion at that time about that and if we need to assign somebody to that at that time when we decide, what does this look like? Then we can move forward. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we won't do it. Okay, so I think we're done with that. We have to approve this, we have, it's been motion and second that we approve the organizational structure as written. We've had discussion, any other discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Hold on. All right, so back to our business meeting and I'm going to ask board members to be sensitive to the time. We, we're going to run through this, through the business part fairly quickly and the, I think the real critical aspects of it is really making sure our, our administration gives their reports and then our passing of our resolution, which allows us to do our work and then our conversation on board matters. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting December 18, 2019 and the business meeting December 18, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved as presented. Oh, I didn't do that.
I need to adjourn the meeting.
Hold on. All right. All right, I'll get there, I'm sorry. Okay, let's, let's just continue on this one, I'll come back before we even make, take any actions. Okay, the committee reports, Ms. Bowers, please present the December 19 Policy Committee meeting briefly, please.
Okay, we met on December 19. We reviewed, focus of our meeting was about equity, we talked about naming, naming school buildings a little bit. And then Dan was going to follow up on some of the questions, one in specific, when I attended a Gamble Craft Show, there was a Westwood Works representative there and she had a Monopoly board game for Westwood. And interestingly, I asked her about historical landmarks in Westwood and she had Dater, she had Westwood, Western Hills High School, but she didn't have Gamble site where the current Gamble Elementary Montessori School is. And she, and I talked about that, you know, the name for that space and having to historically hold the name for that school and she was not aware of that. So anyway, we talked, Dan was present and we talked about him looking into that, to seeing if there's actually some history in the library regarding that name for Gamble having to remain with the school because of the site being bought maybe by the family or something. So we talked about that. Let's see, review certain policies. There were a couple of policies that I think we put on hold, Board Member Bates can remember for the next group of the, the new policy committee. We felt that we're not really precedent, pressing for this time, but, so we pushed those forward and I don't know where those are on here, maybe for review, for the policies on the back. Had a couple of action statements, still about the school names and inquired about how different schools obtained their names. So Dan, General Counsel is going to review names of schools. Specifically, we talked some about John Gilligan's family and renaming Clifton Schools and, and the concern, the family, I think the Cairns community expressed concern about changing the name. I don't think they were interested in changing the name, but that was in the conversation that we were having, that they were, that, that came up, but the community was concerned, but it was not confirmed that that was going to be a change in name for that school. So, let me see, we talked about credit flexibility. And I think we approved that policy for our credit flexibility and like I said previously, we approved, or we pushed a couple of policies, a few policies for the next committee to review beginning in January 2020. These are the minutes, I present them as, as written.
Thank you. Okay, so what I'm going to ask, because we got a couple of things going on and I apologize, it's just been a little bit discombobulating for me tonight, but we have to approve the resolution to approve the 2020 organizational meeting business items. But I'd like to continue with presenting of the minutes. Then we'll go back to organizational meeting, approve this resolution, close this meeting out. Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the Student Achievement Committee meetings from December 19.
Thank you. Yes, we had some follow-up issues with the Workforce Development Council Charter and now that's gone to the full board and administration. We talked again about the MedPace MOU and Mr. Turner was able to locate that and action was taken to perhaps through the career department, career ed department, address some of the things that perhaps MedPace could be doing in, in association particularly with Schroder. We had continued dialogue about College Credit Plus and, and its role and some of the concerns. I know that had been in policy as well as student achievement. And then as well, we talked a lot about participation in College Credit Plus as well as then something we're very excited about, which is the math adoption timeline that'll be coming in the next couple of months for the SAC and also for the board to approve. We also spent some time hearing a tremendous report from Student Services, which as you see the report that's included, really. see the report that's included, really tends to show that we are back in a leadership position in Student Services and for students that have particular needs. We're really, really proud of that. We also discussed the concerns regarding the Iowa testing for the Walnut Hills entrance, and the administration addressed it, alleviated some of the fears there, and talked about additional test opportunities that are coming up, retesting. Mr. Morosky announced the date of the pedestrian safety subcommittee, and we then said how wonderful we thought it was to have Member Davis as a part of our SAC PAC the year that he was here with us, and we appreciated his service and the great depth of understanding and commitment he added to our SAC PAC.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay. Ms. Bolton, please present the finance committee meetings from December 19.
Finance committee, talk about things being confused. We had a day when we had both the audit and the finance committee meeting at the same time, and that would have worked out, except that the administration did need to ask for a month's delay on the presentation of the contracts that we review on an annual basis, and did that in December instead of when we usually do it in November. So Mr. Messer and I continued that finance meeting while Ms. Bates went over to the audit committee to address some of the issues, particularly about abatement and TIPS and what have you, as well as the presentation by our internal auditor, which she'll report on that. We had a very short report from Preschool Promise based upon the fact that they had not done what they usually do on a monthly basis in December. And then we did sit there for the duration of the meeting and review those contracts that are over $200,000, and we really were very impressed with the administration's agility and flexibility in presenting that. And I know that we asked some serious questions, and then we had the last of the CRAs presented to us for this calendar year. And again, want to emphasize that we not only have that with the city of Cincinnati, but we also have it with our other municipalities and townships with whom we deal.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Ms. Bates, please present the audit committee minutes from December 19.
Yes, as Ms. Bolton stated, we had simultaneous meetings, so Mr. Messer and I covered the audit committee, and we had reports from Plattenberg and Associates on the Hinkle filing and the CAFRA report. We, big part of the meeting was taken up with the discussion on abatements and the proposed tax incentive review committee that we were referring to earlier. We did get some members of the audit committee to volunteer for that, Turk, which was Mr. Hellman, Holt House, and Crossit, and we also had kind of offline, Ms. Warner, who also volunteered. So we had some great people step up to help us if indeed that's what we need to do is review the abatements, so that I'm sure will continue. We reappointed audit committee members that were returning, and we held an executive session to discuss new membership. So we will be interviewing a couple of members, or a couple of people who have offered their services for membership. So I present this, these minutes as printed for acceptance.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments, questions about the minutes? If not, I need a motion to approve the committee minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay. We're going to recess out of this part of the meeting. We're going to finish the business of the organizational meeting, and we're going to conclude that meeting. Okay. So the last thing regarding the organizational meeting is a resolution. Mr. Messer, please present the resolution.
Yes, I present a resolution to approve the 2020 organizational meeting business items. I present the resolution as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Having no other business before the board, I declare the organizational meeting adjourned.
One more down.
All right. Now, here we go.
Home stretch, everybody.
So.
Taste that old-fashioned right now.
I'm getting there. Yep, got it. Does anyone have any kudos?
I think, I'd like to have a kudo.
Go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
For all of us in the audience that sat here while we made sausage. I think everybody deserves an applause for that.
Thank you. Nobody's clapping, so. Okay, thank you. All right, any other kudos? Okay, Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, I have several retirements from our certificate personnel. Kimberly Shine is retiring as of December 1st, and of our civil service personnel. I'd like to recognize Louise Darrell and Marilyn Washington. So we thank these professionals for their service to our children and wish them well.
Thank you. Okay, so we've done hearing of the public. We are at the item on our agenda for board matters. We have identified the tax abatement discussion. What this is, I'm hoping, is just an update on where we are right now, and if there's anything to add to it, I think we can. So just to kind of capture and summarize where we are today, at the December 18 meeting, we actually passed three motions in terms of establishing our position for what we were expecting, and I don't have them right in front of me. Does somebody have them in front of them? I have them, if you all want to wait. Okay, but let me, I'll just go off the top of my head. One proposal was to, we were unified, we voted to be unified in our position around holding on the 33%. Secondly, we motioned and approved to establish a Turk, Tax Incentive Review Committee. Okay? And then thirdly, we motioned and passed to offer an extension to city council based on their sort of responses to us, but not to extend it 90, the period of consideration for 90 days, but rather 30 days. So those, that's where we are right now. Now, there's been lots of things going on with this since we first started this conversation. There's a flurry of activity. We have individual council members which have proposed things for us. We brought all those things here. The most recent one, which I am sharing tonight, because I got a call from P.G. Sittenfeld during the holidays, basically asking if there, he was basically asking questions, okay? They recognized, they had gotten the information, but he was asking questions about how we arrived at the 33%. And he is asking if there is a possibility for Jen Wagner to come sometime this week to a joint committee of the Education Committee and the Budget and Finance. So he and David Mann want to come together, have Jen present those numbers, so that they have an opportunity to hear the information again and to ask questions. So that's the latest thing. I am aware, I believe on the, that's one thing. I believe on the 19th, it was either the 19th or the 20th, we received a resolution from Smitherman, which basically is saying there, he wants to propose 31%. So those are the two things that have happened to my knowledge while we were in the Christmas, when we were in the holiday break. So any other comments or updates around that, on where we are with that? Yes?
Well, I'm just very pleased that Mr. Sittenfeld is reaching out to our expert, because that's been a big problem, that there were doubts as to, you know, the efficacy of Ms. Wagner's work. So I think that's a big step, that a member of council is bringing our expert who knows state funding and finance better than anybody else in this city, who is backed by the work of a state consultant as well. So, you know, I am certainly, you know, one to endorse, you know, having Jen present to that committee, and I'll, if I can go, I'll support you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morosky?
I was going to say, so that was the first I'd heard of that, with Councilman Sittenfeld's proposal, and I would echo, I think what Ms. Bates said. I'd also like to put out there that I think Vice Mayor Christopher Smitherman deserves some kudos out of all of this, because that is the closest anyone has even come to the number. It's only two percentage points away, and it was also a fairly respectful proposal. And I know we've, you talked about a lot of things that happened, if we recall at the end of our five and a half hour meeting, I don't know if anyone else watched City Cable that afternoon, but it was pretty disheartening. We were referred to as intimated that we were incompetent, that we didn't know what we were talking about. And it was pretty hurtful in some ways, and then at the end of that week, to see 31% offered by the vice mayor, to me was a big deal, and, you know, I think we can probably get to two percentage points, and I'm pretty happy with that.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I would second what Member Morosky has said, and I think we do send kudos to Vice Mayor Smitherman, largely because that got us off the dime, so to speak, from a standpoint of no more talking about 90-day delay, no more talking about who really knows what it is, what it isn't, and the fact that he indeed presented a motion with 31%, at least recognizing our efforts. I think it was critical, and I think it moved us to where we could be hoping, that the rest of city council that has allegedly told the whole public that they want us to be made whole, I think they can come up hoping with the other 2%, and then we will have an agreement. But I also want to applaud Mrs. Bates's efforts to say, if this does not come forward, if we can't reach an agreement, we will do it ourselves. And I also am thrilled that the board remained absolutely unanimous with seven votes for the 33%, because we have confidence in our leadership, our administrative leadership. So I think we're in good shape, and I think we need to do whatever we can do to try to get the other 2%, and I'm certainly looking to Mr. Sittenfeld to perhaps help deliver that, but I also know that our greatest supporters are our graduates of CPS that are on city council.
Thank you. I would also support us following through with Mr. Sittenfeld's request. I think that, I'm asking, I'm looking down at the end of the table, I'm assuming that that can be easily done this week, so we can get that moving. I do also appreciate that we've gotten closer, and it's not scattered. I will say that, so we are, and the Turk, I believe from what I know, is, there was discussion in the meeting about moving forward with that, so we are taking action as a body in accordance with our motion and approval, so we are moving forward with that. Okay. So, yes.
And one more. At the end of this meeting, at the assignments part of the agenda, I will make an assignment that, to refer to finance, to develop a protocol for appointments, because we're being, you know, I know individual board members are receiving requests to serve.
Right.
And so we need to set some criteria and, you know, figure out what a conflict of interest might be or might not be, so that's what I would do.
I might suggest, I sent you all, you can do that in the assignments, but I might suggest also that we could build time in Saturday to maybe have a conversation around that if you need it, because there is agenda items around there, around comp committee stuff. So you can just take a look at the draft agenda when you see it, and if you want to add it, that's fine. If not, you know, do it a different way.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Okay. So is the pleasure of the board then to move forward with, yes, with the presentation by Jen Wagner? Okay. Sounds good. Yes, Mr. Lindy?
Is that something we can attend? I mean, like, I would like to be there, too.
Yes, it's public.
Yes, great. Yes, so once that meeting gets scheduled, if we could let the board know, so those who can and want to attend can do that.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Is he going to reach out to me, or am I supposed to reach out to him?
Well, here's, I was just getting ready to say, I would suggest that you all reach out to him. Oh, sorry. Just connect with his office and get it scheduled. I'll also follow up with a phone call, just because he called me, and I think he's probably waiting, so I'll probably call him or text him or something to let him know. But if we can get that done tomorrow, that would be great, get it scheduled. Okay. Anything else about the tax abatement piece?
Cross our fingers.
Okay. 33%.
Closer, closer. Closer than we were before the holidays.
All right, yes. Okay, so we're at the item on the agenda where we want to pass, we want to consider our resolutions, so I'm gonna, I'm asking you all to be prepared, because I'm going to call, everybody, probably with the exception of Mr. Lindy, since he's so new to this, he'll get a flavor of it next time you're not off the hook. But we'll move along with presenting our resolutions. Now, the resolutions are tied to some of the organizational development, organizational structure stuff, so you're going to have to fill in the blanks if you need to. Okay? All right, and we're going to start. Mr. Messer, please present the following.
I present a resolution to join the Ohio School Board Association. Present the resolution as written.
As second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Morosky, please present the following resolution.
I would like to present a resolution to join the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund. I present the resolution as written.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Ms. Bates, please present the next resolution.
Yes, I have a resolution to appoint a representative to the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees, and that person will be Carolyn Jones.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Yes, any discussion? Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Ms. Bowers, please present the resolution.
I have a resolution approving standing authorizations for the superintendent to be able to carry out necessary district duties for calendar year 2020. I present this resolution as written.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Mr. Lindy, try your luck.
Just see how this goes.
Yes.
So I would like to propose a resolution. This is for the modified tax budget?
Yes.
For the 2020-2021 fiscal year as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Mr. Lindy, try your luck.
Just see how this goes.
Yes.
So I would like to propose a resolution. This is for the modified tax budget?
Yes.
For the 2020-2021 fiscal year as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
For the 2020-2021 fiscal year as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. And then finally, Mr. Messer, would you present the last resolution?
And I present the following resolution to support Public Education Week, January 26 through February 1st, 2020. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Please call the roll, Ms. Wagner.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Superintendent Mitchell, you have a report?
I do. I have a very brief report in addition to the written report. I always like to be able to highlight our students and the good work they're doing. So you may be interested to know that Kilgore 3rd grade student won a business competition that was judged by the University of Cincinnati's Economic Center. They designed a T-shirt that says, "There's No Place Like Kilgore," with a hand-drawn picture by one of their students. As a result of winning this competition, the Ronald McDonald House, which supports families of six children, for Children's Hospital Medical Center, as a nonprofit, will benefit from the sales of these T-shirts.
All right. Good job.
Great.
Great.
Earlier, I believe, you all spoke about Withrow, and there were some questions about music at Withrow. So you also might be interested to know that, for the first time in 35 years, the Withrow University High School Auditorium was filled with the season of Thursday evening for their holiday concert. And so this was a tradition that had long been a part of the school's history. It has now returned. The Alumni Association raised over $150,000 to pay upgrades to the space.
Wow. Impressive.
During the holiday season, there we go, high school students at Aiken decided to be able to spread some holiday cheer, and they did some volunteer work at Ethel Taylor, in which they handed out gifts to young people, and they ate pizza and cookies. And the kids at Ethel Taylor were really excited to have the high school students with them. You also may be interested to know that the Woodward Bulldog Boys Basketball Team competed against some of the best teams in the nation at the Holiday Basketball Classic of the Palm Springs in West Palm Beach, Florida.
Wow.
The team ended the tournament with a 1-3, but most importantly, they participated in other group activities during the tournament.
That's wonderful.
Very exciting.
Nice opportunity.
And lastly, but not least, Dater High School student participated in a podcast club, and they had the opportunity to visit WVXU with a focus on Democracy in Me project they sponsored, which had a major emphasis on injustice that affects individuals in a society as a whole. And so you can see a picture of our young people as they visited WVXU. So that is my report in addition to the written report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Second?
Second, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the Treasurer?
So moved.
The revised report.
So moved. Second.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
No, on four, eye on the rest.
Thank you, Susan Cranley. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
I'm sorry, did you?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Any inquiries or updates? Mr. Morowski?
I have kind of a briefish update, so I'd like to put this on Board Matters for next time. So once again, I am being tenacious about Imagination Library, and there were three major concerns, as I heard them, the last couple times I brought this up, and particularly during the Board Matters piece. So I'll save this, I just kind of want to prime, I would love to get this on Board Matters next time, and eventually have a decision again. The main concerns were costs with the kids, where our kids are not, and then the proper public purpose. And so the cost for the remainder of the year has gotten down to around $43,000, because the governor's wife, Fran DeWine, is taking this on as a priority, and the state is funding Imagination Library programs and paying for half of the books for districts that want to do it. The other piece is Cincinnati Children's wants this program to continue so much that they're going to cover the administrative costs. So for the remainder of this year, it'd be $43,000, which is a far cry from what it was. Going forward, it's $129,000, which is a far cry from what it was. And then lastly...
And divided with preschool promise.
And divided with preschool promise, potentially, if we decide we want to take it up. So that cost could be $60,000, $65,000. So, but it could only be $65,000 if we decide this was a valuable program. I don't need to tell you its value. I think people know generally that it's valuable if we get books into kids' hands early on, and particularly when 75-plus percent of these students will end up in our schools eventually. The last piece was the auditor of state, Keith Faber, and I have a letter from the auditor of the state of Ohio, saying this has proper public purpose. So I've done what I can to help squelch fears about those three big buckets. And again, I would ask for your reconsideration of continuing Imagination Library going forward, but I'd like to talk more about it.
We will add it to the Board Matters agenda for the 22nd.
And I'll give you these copies, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, give it to staff, so that they can make sure everybody gets it. Okay, any other board, any other inquiries and updates? Is that, okay, yes.
Just an update, and it'll be coming, I would assume, and a discussion perhaps from Board Matters, would be the revision of that portion of the LSDMC handbook that provides for student voting as a block, not the number of students on the LSDMC, but as a block.
Thank you.
And that way, it can probably, I don't know that it needs to be a resolution, because the handbook wasn't, but perhaps the administration can help us figure out what that needs to[1668.54]